Not come on, it means a little closer to the mic. Sure. And aim it more straight toward your mouth. There we go.
All right, here we go.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Eric Kiefer. I've been the plant manager at the North Shore Water Commission for about fifteen years. I'm also a Glendale resident. I live next to Brian.
That's the alley for me. Welcome neighbor.
So, the reason why Charlie invited me to speak about this topic of switching our disinfectant is that it's something people may notice. We switched from chlorine disinfection to chlorine disinfection back in two thousand eight. It was November eighteenth, actually, two thousand eight. We did that for a lot of different reasons. One of them was we were looking to expand our water sales. And that never happened. We tried. We contacted our current wholesale customer as well as Village of Sherwood, and that never panned out. So, we have a disinfectant that we don't necessarily need for the size of our distribution system. And we are looking at a variety of water quality issues. One is lead in the distribution system. We don't have lead in Lake Michigan, but the water, drinking water that passes through lead services. Obviously, Glendale doesn't have anymore. I was told that they were removed. But Whitefish Bay and Fox Point, there's some lead services out there. Switching the disinfectant back to chlorine, chlorine might actually help us in that controlling the lead. It's it might have, it's just gonna taste slightly different. I mean, we fed free chlorine in the distribution system for forty-five years. And then I think the switch back will be somewhat seamless. I don't think people will notice. But you might, you might notice it. It just tastes slightly different. It's has a cost saving of right now, we have to feed a lot more disinfectant because it's a weaker disinfectant. The chlorine is a weaker disinfectant. And we also have to add another chemical to form the chlorine. So there's two chemicals involved in that disinfectant, the one that we're feeding right now. So before we can make that change, we have to do offline testing. We have an apparatus that we're testing different types of water quality or water parameters. And we have to show that there's an improvement in, in water quality for the DNR would even allow us to switch. So we're in that process right now to actually actually, it's been one month of that testing. We have about two to three more months left in that that for sure testing. And if we have some issues or we don't see the results that we're expecting, we would extend the, the trial or the experiment. And we'll confirm by running it, you know, more water through that station. So if we make that transition, it's gonna be in April, May timeframe. That's when the water temperature is optimal for what we're trying to do. We're out of the winter months and we don't have to worry about the water freezing when we're flushing. We don't have to worry about main breaks so much. And we'll, we'll have the time and the resources to focus on the type of flushing that we need during that transition. That's the gist of what's going on. I'm happy to entertain questions. I can give you more information.
Alvin Doherty? Understand this. Originally, why did we change?
So originally, we were gearing up to sell more water. We were trying to push or trying to sell more water to the city of McQuan. Who they it's a long story, but we energies used to own the water utility in McQuan, Deansville and Bayside. Then McQuan purchased that from we energies. And so we thought we'd have an opportunity to sell more water at that point. But we also were trying, after that didn't work out, we were trying to sell more water through Sherwood. We were trying to get them as a member. And that didn't work out. So we were, we were gearing up to, to make a big shift to, to push more water out of our plant. That's why we, that's one of the reasons. The other reason is there's a rule called the dissection byproducts rule, which makes water utilities measure the disinfectant byproducts. That's the result of chlorine reacting with organics in the water. And that was around the same timeframe two thousand eight, when some of those regs were coming out. So we were trying to be proactive. We switched to that, to chloramines to, so we could reduce our dissection byproducts. Now, with that being said, we didn't have a problem with disinfection by products. We're measuring before we made the switch. So we know that when we go back to free chlorine, it's actually it's very, 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 very likely that we won't have a problem.
Other questions? Alderman Schmelzling?
Oh, just, just so I have this in my head right. So right now, we, we sell water through the North Shore Water Commission to part of Sherwood, part of Bayside, and then Fox Point, Whitefish Bay and Glendale.
We do not service Sherwood, but we were trying to get them as a number. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Just trying to get that in my head. And then as part of just a silly way of saying like a taste test, is there other communities around that have chlorine instead of what we have today?
About seventy percent of all water utilities feed chlorine instead of chloramines. So chances are so Cudahy, Oak Creek, South Milwaukee, Port Washington, those are the other surface water treatment plants that are in our immediate vicinity that use chlorine. Chicago uses free chlorine. Green Bay, Madison, you know, just most water utilities feed free chlorine.
Thank you. We don't have any concerns about with growth in the community. I know you said that we scaled back some of our equipment in your, your letter. We're, we're fine for like all of our Bayshore stuff and all of our additional growth in Bayside and all that.
Absolutely. We have so we have ample capacity. A lot more ample, a lot more spare capacity than what we need for any conceivable reason. So we, we're, we're okay.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the council? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. We have four items on the consent agenda, the minutes of our last meeting, approval of accounts payable, approval of two thousand twenty-two World Migratory Bird Day Resolution, and a confirmation of the North Shore Library Board and Community Development Authority appointments. With Ms. Saffram departing, she created a vacancy on the North Shore Library Board. So I did reach out to the Chair of the Library Review Committee and asked her if she would recommend someone from the Review Committee who could, because they had been a part of surveying Glendale residents. They know what Glendale residents want in a library. If they could serve on the, somebody to serve on the North Shore Library Board, she recommended Lindsay Spanz. Lindsay did agree to serve out the remainder of Rachel's term. So it's just for three months and then she'd be reappointed and is willing to continue on. So the appointment would be just for the remainder of the term through April. But so that's the, that one. And then the Community Development Authority with the passing of former Mayor Don Voith, who was on the Community Development Authority since its inception in nineteen eighty-five, created a vacancy there for a citizen. And so with Alderman Wheezy not seeking reelection, I asked if he would serve as the citizen member as one of the citizen members on the Community Development Authority, and he has accepted to do so. So, so and somebody with institutional knowledge who's been around the council for fifteen years will continue on the CDA. So we really appreciate your willingness to serve. And in the city for
It's easy to get away from all this.
On the, on the other hand, you can't get rid of me. All right. It's kind of a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please.
I'm moved.
Moved by Alderman Doherty.
Okay.
Second about Alderman Schmelzling. Any discussion? Okay, without objection, the consent agenda is adopted. Seeing no objections, we'll move on. Next items of new business. Item five A is a recommendation for the Plan Commission to schedule a public hearing on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. For a change of zoning of sixteen sixteen West Bender Road from an S one special to a plan development unit for multifamily residential facility. This item comes from the Plan Commission. We referred it to the Plan Commission a few months back. Plan Commission did hold its public hearing. We then recommended from the Plan Commission back to the common council that we move forward with the process. This is the nursing home across the, on the north side of Bender Road across from, that used to be decor, I believe. So it's the, the proposal is to convert it into apartments inside. So it's some exterior facade changes, but not significant. And most of it is interior work, but it does require rezoning. So is there a motion to, to move forward then with this process and to schedule the public hearing for February fourteenth? Move by Alderman Doherty.
Okay.
Second about Miguel Hard. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Doherty?
Question where there was a comment in some of the literature we got where they talked about the parking ratio. But they talked about it as being now implying it would be different later. Was there, is there more than one phase I'm not getting out of this?
So the parking, most of the parking, there will be some parking along the sides and in the front as there is right now.
Right.
But most of the parking is going to be toward the back and it's going to be structured a little differently in order to create significantly more, significantly more parking than is required by our city ordinance. Plus garages.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yep. Okay. So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of scheduling the public hearing for February fourteenth at six P M, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The public hearing will be scheduled and announced. Next is item five B, a recommendation to forward to the Plan Commission, a review of rezoning request of fifty-eight, twelve and fifty-eight, twenty North Green Bay from B four office to M one warehouse, light manufacturing, office and service district. And I will ask the city administrator, do you have, are you ready to report on this? Okay, Mr. Hoffman.
This request is coming before you as, as a city initiated rezoning request in comparison to a property owner initiated rezoning request. We received interest for potential development on this property and in order for the bird.
Speak right into the microphone or they can't hear you. Yeah.
In order for this to proceed for public review, the underlying zoning should be consistent. And in essence, not a spot zoning. So the plant, the M one is consistent with the planned use that will be coming forward. So in order to get the process going, asking for you to forward this to the Plan Commission.
Alvin Doherty?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? Second about Alderman Wheezy. Any discussion? Yeah, Alderman Schmelzling?
Is it ready to disclose what might be going in there?
Not at this time. Any further discussion? Alderman Wheezy?
When the, you know, at this point, you know, obviously to some discussions that have been had, will the potential development extend a little bit further to the east in that property that's, you know, looking at the map? You've got this area, these two, this area up here. Would that be incorporated? It will. Okay. So that whole corner.
It's making all the zoning consistent and all those parcels.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, so it's been moved forward to the Plan Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aries. Next is the item five C, review and approval of intergovernmental cooperation agreement between MMSD and the city of Glendale for the Clutch Dam Fish Passage Project. Mr. Hoffman. They can't hear you again.
As, as the memo identifies, the city has been in discussions over a period of time with MMSD regarding a parcel on the east side of the river for a future fish passage. This, this city owned property, the intent is for the city to sell it for a dollar attached to the memo patient associated with some of the deed restrictions associated with that transfer to make sure that it remains consistent with the, the current use, current public access.
I believe it's currently zoned as conservator or conservation. So it's just, I think, a step above even beyond parkland. So it cannot be developed in any way, shape or form or used. And so it's consistent with MMSD's proposal.
Yes.
Yep. All right. Is there a motion to approve the, the ICA with MMSD? Move about them and Wheezy.
I could.
Second about a woman Shaw. Any discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item five D, review and approval of a bid for the DPW Building and Yard Video Surveillance Solution System. Mr. Hoffman. Are you reporting on this or is Charlie reporting on this?
Drum on here.
You are very good. All right. Yes, this is to actually replace, update and, and put back in, into our facility up there.
As a memo indicates, during the construction of this building, our connection was severed. So therefore our cameras no longer work. So this is a reinstallation of cameras for the facility itself and the DPW yard.
Thank. Questions from the council? Alderman Wheezy?
Thank you. A couple of real quick questions. In the information from PCS, they're showing a purchase or lease. Which direction?
We would do the purchase.
Do a purchase.
It's cost effective to do the purchase. Yes.
All right. Now, the other is in other times, in fact, you know, in the third item from this, you're showing multiple companies that have bid and their costs. This one showed as well as the next item for the garage door. Even though other entities had been contacted, there was no summary of what their bids were. And can you tell us what the costs, why these guys were the selected vendor?
They were the, the cheapest vendor. Yes, there was three of them that we, four of them that we contacted, three that we received bids from, and this was the cheapest.
All right. Yeah. But what would you, do you know offhand what the other bid values were?
I don't have that in front of me.
Because normally we, you do show that or it is shown in our package.
Okay, I can provide those.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Doherty?
When we look at this kind of thing, is it there's different values you get when you get a bid for something on surveillance equipment, you feel this even though it's the lowest bid, is it meeting what we really need?
We do. And that's why I incorporated Rich Fiscato is the Bayside I T who also does R T, our I T here at Glendale. Because I know some, but not all. So I preferred his expert opinions. We actually did meet with, with the vendor. We do feel that yes, this is the best product that we're getting actually for the best price. So it works really well.
Okay. Didn't want us to just get the lowest price because it was the lowest price.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other have a motion then to approve the bid?
So moved.
I could move bottom lazy second about a woman Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Aries. Next item, item five E, review and approval of bid for the DPW Building Garage Door Replacements. Mr. Emig?
Yes, again, these doors have seen a lot of wear and tear. We've exceeded purchase price with repairs and that sort. So this is actually, the other issue too, is that the door is currently now, as you approach the doors, they automatically go open. So they're concerned about security. So this will eliminate through this, through this, this project that and we'll have remotes as the police do for theirs as well. So we feel again, this is a cost saving measure that'll benefit us by having new doors and also included in this is a I believe we have a, a, a plan for a maintenance preventative maintenance plan, which previously was not done and probably led to their early demise.
Questions, remember, Alderman Schmelzling?
Mention there's maintenance. I only see two preventative maintenance inspections listed. Is it beyond that one year period?
Right. It would be, it would be on that. Right.
Okay. So just make sure that's, you know, worked out otherwise with them because I only saw it for the two on the, the contract.
Right. No, we've got it included. Yes.
And again, this was the lowest of multiple bids.
Yes.
And this
And previously, just for clarification, we've done this before with the, just the submitting of the bid, at least for the public work. So I can provide and I will do that, knowing that's the intent and the request of council going forward to provide all the, the bids in the packet. But yes, it is the lowest bid. And again, as Alderman Doherty asked previously, we are very happy with the service that we believe we'll get with this and the product.
Thank you. Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Can I have a motion then to approve the bid for the DPW Building Garage Door Replacement?
I'm moved.
Move bottom and Shaw, second about Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, also Mr. Emig again, review and approval of bid for the two thousand twenty-two Glendale Sewer Linings and Manhole Rehabilitation Project. This one you did present to us all three bids.
I did. Yes, I've done my homework on this one. You have all the information on this one.
It's a good price compared to the others. Want to tell us about this?
Yeah, this is again, for our two thousand twenty Glendale Sewer Line and Manhole Rehabilitation. The map is located actually on the city's website. So I've got many questions about that, but that's, it's our typical annual program. So again, we are recommending that Vizu Sewer be the, the contract awarded to them is the, the lowest base bid.
I do have a question. One of the bids is twice as expensive as the first and second. I'm just curious.
You were just as shocked as you were. It came out of left field and you know, maybe they don't want the, the business. We don't, we don't know. But there was, we saw that first one and thought, oh, this is not going to be good. And then the other two came in more in line with what we were projecting. So it was a lot better.
Okay. Any questions from members of the council? A motion then to approve Vizu Sewer. I'm moved. By Alderman Shaw, seconded by Alderman Schmelzling. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item, review and appointment of Peter Sorenson from Davy Resource Group as the city forester. This is, this is your meeting.
It's the most I've spoken, I think, in four years, five years. Yes, every year, despite that, we have, we do have a three year contract with, with Davy. So we're in about our second year with them. But each year, per our city ordinance, we have to approve the city foresters. So again, we're requiring Pete Sorensen with Davy Resource Group.
Okay. And you've been happy with the service the last
Very happy. Yeah. Actually, we haven't had to use them as much as we needed, but it's a good thing to have that.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Move bottom and Shaw.
I'll second it.
Second about Miguel Hard. Discussion. Alderman Wheezy?
Charlie, just out of curiosity, since this is an ongoing contract, why is this in front of us?
Every year you have to approve the city forester per ordinance.
Every year we do, even though it's an ongoing contract.
Correct. Yes. All right. That's why I still wrote it up in the memo that it is an ongoing contract. However, we still have to approve the city forester every year.
If we didn't like the forester, we still be with the company. We'd have to pick a different person from their company.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. And interesting. I was just over the down in Florida and by golly, Davy Resource was down there. So they're a big company.
They are. They're a big outfit.
Alvin Schmelzling?
Wanted to say that I did have some feedback from constituents and they're very happy with either this individual or other individual from public works when they were doing some work in their right of life.
That would be us. We, we take credit for that one hundred percent.
Thank you.
In, in all seriousness, he addresses the tree. Yes, it's a hazard and we're going to take it down.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, review and approval, change of equipment purchase in the two thousand twenty-two general fund budget to patrol truck, cab and chassis.
He's still Thing and he's just going.
I'm, I'm still
All right. So this is, this is a little bit confusing. But again, it's based upon what I've, what we've talked about before, the supply chain issue and the ordering of vehicles. And just because of the sidebar, we still have not taken our, our new bucket truck yet so that it's still in the Ford processing plant in Ohio. We're supposed to take delivery before the end of this year. So that's actually coming forward this year too. But it's unfortunate, it's the unfortunate part we're in. So we're hearing from Lakeside that if we order a truck now, we cannot get a truck in two thousand twenty-two. It's just not possible. One was already approved in, in the, in the five year C I P for this year, plow truck with wing for one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So what I'm looking for is actually to order two of the cabin chassis. We would order it this year. We won't take delivery until twenty-three. Therefore, it would come out of the twenty-three budget. And that way we have them on hand. Everything else that we deal with our, our trucks, the plows, the, the salters, the V box, all the other parts. We're not hearing that there's any delay so much as these. I mean, these are a year or two out and considering that a lot of trucks in our fleet currently now are thirty years. We're, we're kind of on a wing and a prayer, if you will, with a lot of these trucks, keeping them on the road and, and, and workable. So we're doing what we can and we do appreciate that every year you do approve one for us. But this year is a little bit of a different ask. So I'm trying to make it understandable that we're actually just buying the cabin chassis. Ordering it this year will take delivery in two thousand twenty-three. I will then update the, when we bring it back, the, the capital improvement plan for you to all reapprove. But that would be using, so going from one eighty-five up to two oh five to order these two to get them in the pipeline, if you will, if that makes sense.
Alvin Doherty?
I'll probably exclude myself on the vote. I'm CFO of Lakeside. Everything you said is true. You can't actually get a truck right now. We can't get anyone in twenty-two. And actually, you got to get in line for twenty-three. So it's our world right now.
Questions? I have a motion then to approve the purchase of the chassis and truck.
So moved.
Move out of women Shaw. Second about them and Wheezy. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Abstentions? Okay, one abstention. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Concludes my appearance tonight.
Okay. You're not coming back for an encore? Yeah. All right. The next item, this is a resolution designating the public depositories for the city of Glendale and the Glendale Water Utility, authorizing withdrawal of city and utility funds to the city of Glendale. Mr. Hoffman?
I think this is self explanatory per the memo in light of Administrator Sastrum leaving the organization. This identifies other staff in lieu of her involvement in the public depository.
Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the recommendation from staff?
I'm moved.
Move out to woman Shaw.
Second.
Second about Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carries. Next, Commission Committee Board and Staff Reports. Alderwoman Vukovich.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Alderman Doherty?
Nothing to report tonight.
Alderman Gellhard.
Nothing to report this evening.
Alderman Wheezy?
This evening.
Alderman Schmelzling?
Fourth of July, first two thousand twenty-two committee meetings coming up on the eighteenth. I think since we'll need some help. Maybe I'll tap someone on the shoulder who might be able to throw in an assist. All jokes aside, we are looking for volunteers and individuals that can just pick up little bits and pieces as well as committee members. We've had one person step back from the committee. So we do want to put off a great event this year and with that we need help. So just doing a general all points bulletin for that. But beyond that, it will be here in the council chambers on the eighteenth and just forward any leads my way. We are reaching out to people who have been involved in the past with phone calls, emails, just to see if they want to step forward again now that we're hopefully by this time past the pandemic.
All right, Alderman Shaw?
The North, excuse me, the North Shore Library Board will be meeting on Thursday, January twentieth. And just as an FYI, there had been some staffing changes at the North Shore Library as, and end of the two thousand twenty-one. And so we're in the process of looking for a new library director. And I know Susan Drager Anderson has been gracious enough to say she'll do the interim in the meantime. Not in person necessary, but she knows the day to day functions. So her and staff are taking care of the difference.
All right, thank you. And city administrator, Mr. Hoffman?
Since we last met, the Human Resource Department did receive many qualified applications for the Community Development Director. We've, in working with an interview panel, we Uh we've uh in working with an interview panel, uh we reduced that number down to four candidates. As early as uh tomorrow morning, we will be conducting round one in particular.
Yeah, didn't catch the last part of that, it was the following up with the second, uh tomorrow morning, we're wrapping up interviews, and then second set of interviews coming up. Yes, okay, I'm just repeating it for the folks on the Zoom, so.
What is this for, I'm sorry, I did not hear.
The Director of Development for the City.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and uh then um that, all Mr. Hofflin? Yes, okay, and then my report, uh the I C C met today. Um probably this thing we spent the, the longest amount of time discussing um today had to do with a bill that was introduced um in the state legislature that would allow the entire Milwaukee Regional Medical Complex to be completely tax exempt. As it stands right now, some of the property um at the medical complex are doctor's offices or restaurants or things of that nature which are taxable, and um there's actually a proposal to make the entire complex fully tax exempt. Um and the reason it was such a big discussion today is many of us have medical facilities in our municipalities. And uh, and so the, i- if they, if the bill is approved for the Milwaukee Regional Medical Complex, it could be approved for a lot of other municipalities to make medical uh buildings entirely um tax exempt. Logic? Well, so with the property used to be owned by the county, and when the county owned it, it was tax-exempt property. But when it was purchased from the county by the, the medical facility, they, they did not incorporate into their agreement essentially that when the assessor went in to reassess, they took all the portions of the building that were for commercial purposes, like doctor's offices and, and you know, restaurants and, and other things that aren't hell, uh weren't hospital-related, and taxed them. And so now they're trying to, basically, it's almost like dark store all over again, only this time it's for medical facilities. And we spent a significant amount of time discussing it today, so Wawa Tosa is right now, once again, in the center of all of this, but I'm certain it's, it's gonna come back at our next meeting next month, but I wanted to inform the council that if this happens, it's likely to be the beginning of a snowballing effect.
It's really not fair to anybody else who's trying to run a restaurant somewhere else or anything else, and they pay tax.
Right, and typically the tax is borne by the entities that are non-taxable. With it, right, so, or that are taxable, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, it's a, it's a level playing field right now.
Right.
Okay.
So that was the main thing today, uh the North Shore Fire Department would meet tomorrow morning, but the meeting was canceled this month, nothing that was urgent, so we'll meet again in February. Alright, uh that concludes the reports. Um the Common Council is noticed to go into a closed session, subject to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub C, and that is to discuss employment uh of, or the uh update on recruitment of a city administrator. Um this isn't just an update, it actually is going over some confidential information that has come out, you know, for, to help us prepare and, and and determine what the, the city administrator role will look like, so um can I have a motion to convene in closed session, please? Move bottom of Shaw, uh second of Alderman Schmelzling, all those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We are in closed session, uh we will reconvene in open session, there will not be any motions to make, there will not be any formal action. So for those of you who are wa- watching online, when we go into closed session, you're gonna go into a waiting room. Um when you come out of the waiting room at the end, it's just gonna be to adjourn, but you're welcome to sit in the waiting room a whole time if you want to. Okay, we've reconvened in open session, um Alderwoman Shaw made the motion to reconvene, Alderman Schmelzling seconded. Uh so we're now in open session, uh we did meet with our recruiting uh team from P A A, and uh at this point, we have no further agenda items, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Move bottom of Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second about a woman Vukovich, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 All opposed, John, you wanna hit the gavel for me? Stand adjourned. That was, that was a good Hey, stop recording.